So we have seven members present. Waiting for Mr. O'Brien, Jim O'Brien. And I don't know if Skippy has access. John, do you know if Skippy has access to?
Frank, I don't believe he knows how to use his iPhone.
Okay. That's fine. There's Mr. O'Brien.
I think we can get started. If we have eight and Skippy's not coming, we should be.
I don't believe Skippy's coming.
Okay, then why don't we get started? This is the annual meeting of the planning board in a public hearing. I'll start off with a roll call. Mr. Amico.
Present.
Mr. Charloni.
Yeah.
Mr. Del Vecchio. Mr. Del Vecchio.
You have to unmute.
You have to unmute, Anthony.
Start six.
I see him. Mr. Desamoni.
Yeah.
Mr. Devo.
Here.
Mr. Giovanni is absent. Mr. Garamello.
Present.
Am I pronouncing that right? Garamello. Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Penn.
Here.
Okay. So I would like to say. Dean McKenna, our chairman, has moved on to new endeavors and no longer with the board. So Louis Charloni as vice chair will start the meeting off and then we'll move into election of offices and then into the public hearing.
So Frank, the first order of business is the election of officers?
That's correct.
Okay, we're going to take nominations. So we're going to do one office at a time. We're going to take nominations for chairman of the planning board. We're going to need five votes for that person to win, to be, to prevail in that, on that, in each of the particular positions. So I'm open for nominations for the planning, for the chairman of the planning board. The chair recognizes John DiSimoni.
I make a motion that we nominate Mr. Charloni for chairman.
I need a, Mr. Devo, Mr. Mr. DiSimoni has nominated Mr. Charloni for chairman of the planning board. I need a second.
I second it. Mr. I second it.
Mr. Garamello, second. We, are there any further nominations for chairman of the planning board? For the third and final time, are there any other further nominations for chairman of the planning board? Hearing none, we're going to close nominations. And since there's only one nominee, we can do it by voice vote. All those in favor of Mr. Charloni to be chairman of the planning board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We now move to vice chairman of the planning board. And we're open for nominations. The chair recognizes John DiSimoni.
I nominate Mr. Amico for vice, for vice chairperson.
Vice, Mr. Amico has been nominated for vice chairman. I need a second.
I second.
Mr. Amico has been nominated and seconded. Are there any further nominations for vice chairman of the planning board? For the third and final time, are there any, are there nominations for vice chairman of the planning board? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the nominations for vice chairman. Having only one nominee, we will, we can vote by voice vote. All those in favor of Mr. Amico being vice chairman of the planning board, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Mr. Amico is vice chairman of the planning board. We move to secretary of the planning board. The chair recognizes Juan Garamello for nominations.
I second.
Well, first I need, no, Juan Garamello has been recognized to nominate somebody. Juan?
Mr. Chairman, so the person I spoke to, I don't believe wishes to serve in that capacity.
Okay, then I'll recognize Catherine Penn for nominations for secretary to the planning board.
No.
I don't get it.
Yeah. So Mr. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to run for secretary of the planning board.
Mr. Garamello nominates Mr. Garamello for the secretary of the planning board. Do, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a, I have a second from Kathy Penn. Mr. Garamello has been nominated. Are there any further nominations for secretary to the planning board? Are there any further, for the third and final time, are there any further nominations for secretary of the planning board? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Garamello, all those in favor of Mr. Garamello being, being secretary of the planning board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Mr. Garamello is now selected as secretary of the planning board. That completes our offices. I just want to take just forty-five seconds to, to recognize the fact that Gene McKenna, who served long and distinguished as our chairman, he also brought dignity and, and respect to the planning board, and he was sorely missed, both as a member and as the chairman. Frank, can we, shall we move to the public hearing?
Yes, we will. I'd like to congratulate our new chairman, vice chairman and secretary. Two thousand twenty-one calendar year. With that, we'll move on to a public hearing. This is a public hearing. It's held regarding the application of the McCollin Highway Development Company, care of the H Y M Investment Group LLC for definitive subdivision plan in connection with the first phase of the Suffolk Downs project located on two twenty Revere Beach Parkway for the creation of five lots with associated roadways. Yeah, the property is bounded by, northerly by Winthrop Ave, easterly by Washburn Ave, southerly and westerly by the remainder of the overall Suffolk Downs development property. Again, said parcel contains approximately eleven point nine acres with four lots and five streets labeled as Road A through Road E. It's shown on a plan file with the planning board. Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
We'll open the public hearing. The first order, first order of business will be the proponents will, will be able to speak.
Thank you. This is Mike Barowski. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
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 Great. Good to be with everyone. My name is Mike Barowski with the H Y M Investment Group. So representing the proponent, McCollin Highway Development Company. So I thought, I know there are some new members to the planning board. If it's helpful, I could just do, do a very brief overview of the Suffolk Downs project and just show a few slides before we really get to the order of business, which is the, the review of our definitive, definitive subdivision plan, which is of course following the previous approval of our preliminary subdivision plan. So I'm going to start by sharing those slides. I will say I have a couple of folks here with me from H Y M, Mike Scannell and Ramey Schneider, who work with me on the project on the construction and development side and also from Beals and Thomas, Jeff Heidelberg, and I think Liz Clark is here, or she will be here soon. So, and they'll, and Jeff will be speaking in just a few minutes. So I'm going to start with sharing my screen just to give a very, again, a very brief overview of the project for those of you who are not familiar with it. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
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 Okay. So I'm sure most of you are familiar with the site. Very, very briefly, we did, we did acquire the site in May of two thousand seventeen and this, you know, this just shows the outline of all the, the boundary of the parcel that we've been working on. We do have master plan approval from the city of Revere, from the city of Boston, and at a state level. So we just finished up, we finished up with Revere back in two thousand eighteen with the state in early two thousand twenty and just recently in Boston, we finished with Boston. The reason, of course, we did that is because the city, the, the site is, is actually, part of it is in Boston and part of the site is in Revere. So this is a summary of the master plan that was approved. This is a rendered site plan, so this just shows all of our open space and the building parcels. In total, we, we are approved for sixteen point two million square feet. Of course, this is a very large project. It's going to take, you know, twenty to thirty years to build out. However, you know, we are, we are starting, starting our development and starting the first phase of the development in the, on the Revere side, which many of you are aware of. Just to summarize what we are approved for in Revere, we are approved by, we have a special permit that we approved, approved for five point six million square feet. The way that breaks down is approximately fifty percent of that square footage is residential and fifty percent commercial. So you can see two point eight million square feet of residential square footage and then this commercial square footage, which is broken up between office, office, commercial, retail and hotel square footage totals another approximately two point eight million square feet. So of course, the Revere portion of the site is where, within my cursor on this side of the site, here's the Beauchamp Tea Station, Winthrop Avenue, Revere Beach Parkway, and you know, Beauchamp School over here. So this is the Revere portion of the site where that five point six million square feet will be.
May I ask when this, you plan to start this portion?
Sure. Well, this, this, this process of, of starting to subdivide the site is part of that initial process, but we're planning on breaking ground this, this summer, so probably around June or July.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Okay. This land use plan, there's a lot going on here, but just, just a summary of what will be built on the site. So this kind of light orange color is residential. In many cases, that's mixed use with, with retail at the ground level. This blue color is commercial buildings, so that's usually office uses. The orange is hotel and the, the pink color are specialized retail buildings. So, so again, you can see, this is the Revere portion of the site. You can see the municipal boundary here between Boston and Revere. And so this is how the, how we're planning for the buildings to break down on the Revere side. And again, it will be fifty, fifty percent of our square footage will be commercial square footage and approximately fifty percent will be residential uses.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Will the residential be apartments?
There'll be a mix of apartments, senior housing and condominiums. Yes.
Oh, there'll be that kind of a mix.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, exactly.
And what kind of a?
Catherine, Ms. Penn, we're going to let this, we're going to let Mike finish his, his, his proposal. And then, and then we're going to have questions for him. You'll be able to question as much as you want afterwards.
Yeah.
Okay.
Continue his proposal, okay? Thank you, Kathy.
Yep. All right.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And just to move forward, I only have two more slides. Then we'll get to the actual, the reason why we're here tonight in more detail. So this is our open space plan for those who haven't seen it. So twenty-five percent of our site, our site is a hundred sixty acres, so that's forty acres will be open space. And so twenty-five percent of the land area, this is, this shows, this shows how our open space system comes together. We have a large central common. We have an outdoor theater. We have very generous sized plazas here. You can see on the Revere side, we have a plaza right here across from the, right real adjacent to the Beauchamp Tea Station. And we have a lot of open space here near Sales Creek. And this is actually an outdoor theater, which we're really excited about, which will come, which will be built out in a laser, later phase. But just to give you a sense of the, the amount of open space we have here and, you know, the really the well thought out, thought out network that we, we came up with for our master plan approvals. And the last slide before I hand it off to Jeff, this shows our phasing plan. So I, I think you asked a minute ago when we're starting construction. The answer is in June. And so for this entire site, we are starting construction here. Again, you can see this is on the Revere side. We're calling this Phase One R, right adjacent to the Beauchamp Tea Station. Generally, the way this site will be built out over time is that we will be starting at the tea stations. So again, starting at Beauchamp and also Suffolk Downs, and then really moving our way into the site and then finishing up here near Route One A. But again, our initial development phase is here, is here, what we're calling Phase One R. And the definitive subdivision plan you're going to see tonight will show how we're planning on subdividing these parcels out for development moving forward. So I think with that, I'm going to hand it off to Jeff Heidelberg as, as was said, I'm happy to answer any questions after, after we get through the presentation. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen now, Jeff, and you can start. Nope, I think you already did. Okay, perfect.
Thanks. This is Jeff Heidelberg from Beals and Thomas, representing H Y M M H D C in this. We're here today to talk about the definitive subdivision plan approval for Phase One R for the Suffolk Downs site. So as Mike outlined, here is the overall parcel of Suffolk Downs. The city line between city of Revere and city of Boston resides at this location here. And we're keyed in at this northeast corner of the site. And this is what we're talking about today is subdividing this portion of this overall lot to create sublots or, or new lots for new buildings to be built as well as roadways that will support the infrastructure for those buildings that are going to be built. I'm going to zoom in quickly on them. Here's the lots. We have multiple lots that are getting carved out. We've got R one. This was that first building that Mike referred to adjacent to Winthrop Ave and Washburn Ave with the tea station located further off the page here to the east. We have R nine, R three and R five as part of this definitive subdivision. We also have roadways that are planned in, in supporting access and the infrastructure that would be going within those roadways, going clockwise, Road A, Road B, Road C, D and E. I'm going to stay on this slide here only because it starts, because this is a rather large piece of property that's getting subdivided. It splits over multiple sheets on a PDF on, on our screen. So I'm going to stay on this slide just to kind of outline a, a few items that I'm going to talk about in a minute. So Winthrop Avenue is along the frontage, which then further to the west, off the page to the left here, turns into Revere, Revere Beach Parkway, connects over to Revere Beach Parkway. And Thomasello, existing Thomasello, is again further to the west on the side of the site. Road A will be a right in, right out along Winthrop Ave. Road B connecting here to Winthrop Avenue is a fully signalized intersection, will be a fully signalized intersection, two lane road that connects out to Winthrop Ave with full access in all directions. There is one road that is a little bit different than the others, Road C, which is planned to be a one-way roadway. That's part of this subdivision plan. And that's the idea of that roadway is to create some character along a pedestrian friendly setting where there is outdoor seating space, plaza space and landscaping within this area here. So this was presented first off, actually quite a while ago, I'd say almost fifteen months ago now, for the first time for preliminary subdivision plan approval. It was then revised and redrafted and approved under a preliminary subdivision plan approval in May of last year. This definitive is in agreement with what was submitted in May. And was, this final definitive plan was submitted in November. So with that, I'm going to jump off this slide that outlines the lots and I'm going to jump into the, again, it's split over a few pages, but if you bear with me, I can explain what's happening here. So here's the roadways. Again, we are at the upper right corner of the overall site with building R one located here or lot R one located here on the, the northeast portion. This here is Road B connecting to Winthrop Ave. This will be eventually the signalized intersection along with, along Winthrop Avenue, two lane road. Within this road, we have adequate width to provide bike path, parking, pedestrian access along sidewalks and, and vehicular access. So these have eleven foot wide roadway, eleven foot wide travel paths for the, for the vehicles, on-street parking provided where it made sense and the bike path, which is actually off the road on Road B. We do have a network of, of this bike path throughout the proposed Phase One R site. Most of it is on, on the sidewalk level up here. Other locations, it would be along the roadway itself or at, at, at the roadway level. Again, this intersection here, roadway here, Road C intersects Road B as well as Road D. And this would be the one-way roadway. Here we have a twenty-foot wide road that has on-street parking as well. And again, this ties into this pedestrian zone where in the future there will be a plaza organized between this lot R one, R nine. And it's really the idea here is to keep this, the buildings closer and more pedestrian friendly space, which is why the, the reduced width and the one-way travel.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, 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 did you, someone just called me. Did you just call me? Anthony, could you mute yourself, please?
Moving to the west, the site, from what I was just showing you, that Road B, if we continue along Winthrop Ave along the frontage here, we get to Road A, the building lot between Road A and Road B, if you saw it on the plan earlier, was Lot R five. So this is that right in, right out that I mentioned earlier that does tie into Winthrop Ave. This is Revere Beach Parkway, coming off the page, if you can see this. Along this stretch here is Revere Beach Parkway. This is a right in, right out access road. Provides access down to Road E. And for this initial phase, Phase One, we're creating a temporary condition where there is a connection to the existing Thomasello Drive located here on the western side, along with this temporary road that connects from Road A and E. It basically is a continuation of Road E that ties into Thomasello. We're also proposing this temporary surface parking lot to support the phase. This parking would eventually go away and parking would be incorporated to, incorporated into the future buildings in interior parking garage spaces. So that's the roadway layout. I'm going to jump down to, next is the I'm going to keep going in the same order, traveling from east to west as this is the, the main prime corner of the site. These are just the roadway markings going through where we have crosswalks. We're providing crosswalks, accessible curb ramps where appropriate. There are handicap parking spaces as well that are provided access along these sidewalks, along the roadways that can, that provide access through these handicap ramps. Again, on-street parking located along each of the roadways where appropriate and the bike, bike lane markings. And this also kind of goes into where we talk about some of the radiuses of the, the roadways. I shouldn't, I will mention at the end, certain waivers that are being sought for this approval so that this layout works with the intended design. And I'll get into those in, at the end, but just note that, you know, some of these curb radiuses are less than twenty-five feet, which we'll talk about in a few minutes.
Is that all, Mr. Heidelberg?
I was going to go through each of the utility, I was going to talk utilities and drainage as well unless.
Go right ahead, sir.
All right. So further down, we've got grading, grading and drainage plan, which shows, you know, the, the tie-in elevation here along Winthrop Avenue to come into the site. You're rising up. We have drainage along the roadways to support this roadway network. We have the, the drainage split throughout this phase where a significant portion of the drainage travels along to the front end, to the northern end of the site, along Winthrop Ave, where it currently does. So there is currently a drain line that runs along the frontage of Winthrop Ave, along Revere Beach Parkway and then discharges to Sales Creek, the Green Creek portion of Sales Creek. We continue mimicking that existing condition. We are upgrading that drain line to handle the existing flow a little bit better than it does today and to handle the advanced storm event for the proposed design. So we have drain heading to the north. I'll show that on the next sheet, but we also have drainage heading to the south. A portion of this roadway network discharged through catch basins to drain manholes that discharge to a detention basin further south within the site. The connection along the north, as I mentioned earlier, discharges to Sales Creek. This is that Green Creek portion of Sales Creek that heads underneath Revere Beach Parkway. And here's the outlet here that connects to Sales Creek. So that's the grading and drainage. Jump to utilities. First. I'll speak, sorry. Again, same order. We have the R one site here located this end of the site. We have our utilities within the roadways. So this is the infrastructure required to support the, the future buildings. I will, I'll go in order, water and then sewer and then electric. So water, there is a M W R A transmission line along Winthrop Avenue that we're connecting to. There, since the M W R A cannot service a private group directly, this is a city of Revere connection. This is a water, water meter pit that would be controlled by the city of Revere. And then the water line does loop through the site over to Road A where it does tie back to the M W R A system. And again, there's a second water meter pit there that is controlled by the city of Revere. The water system is within the roadways and certain loops through the site and services the buildings. There is tie-ins off of stubs from this water main to the buildings as well as hydrants that are tied in off of those water mains that run through this, through the site. The sewer lines are set up in a similar fashion in that there is the main infrastructure system through the roadway network that flow to a sewer pump station. Everything flows via gravity through that interior roadway network within sewer drain line, sewer lines to this sewer pump station. Sewer pump station then provides a force name. Force name comes out along the Revere Beach Parkway frontage and then eventually ties into the existing sewer line that's within the city of Revere Public Safety Facility. So this is the concept that was discussed through the preliminary plan as well. Lastly, I'll just mention quickly the electric telephone communications system. There's a spine network that runs through, along Winthrop Avenue. We're tying into that system, working with National Grid, Verizon, et cetera, to pull the system into the site and creating a, a network that again can service each one of these buildings individually with the main infrastructure running through the roadway network. So I'm going to touch quickly on the waivers that are being sought. Within the application itself, we've identified each one individually. We have waiver requests outlined. Some are, you know, pretty simple, you know, plans should be drawn on tracing cloth. We're providing it on on sheets. The, the size of the sheets was another item, but once we get into the meat of it, one of the items is a twenty-five foot wide, twenty-five foot turning radius on curb radius at the intersections. We're going less than that at a few of these locations. We've been discussing this since the inception of the, of the plan that we would look at creating more of a pedestrian friendly, friendly atmosphere utilizing complete streets. utilizing complete streets thinking, which does request that you use a tighter radius to create a safer zone for travel connecting, for pedestrian travel connecting from sidewalk to sidewalk. So in, in respect to those ideas, we are tightening our radius at a, at a number of these locations, less than the 25 feet. We're also, the next one that I'd like to mention is the requirement to be above 50, elevation 15, Boston City Base. The elevation of Winterbav does not allow us to do that. We do need to tie our roadway network into Winterbav Avenue. So there are some slight locations along the frontage that we will need to construct these roadways at an elevation of less than 15 BCB. And this is shown on the grading plans. Here's elevation 17, you're coming down 16, here's elevation 15. And then, so there are portions that will be lower than elevation 15. The minimum width of minor streets right away shall be 50 feet. There is a long Road C, we're reducing the width of the roadway. And that's because we're trying to keep that pedestrian-friendly atmosphere, creating a one-way road, a 20-foot wide roadway with parking. So for that reason, we're deviating from the 50-foot. The cross-sections themselves included in the set of plans, I'll jump to it after I run through the rest of these. The cross-sections themselves basically define the width of each one of the various items that fall within that roadway between the sidewalk, curb, travel lane, parking lane. There is variations to the typical cross-section that's provided for in the subdivision rules that we're seeking a deviation from. And that's, we're using 11-foot wide roadways, travel lanes in many locations or a 20-foot wide road travel lane where it's one-way and our parallel parking dimension deviates from the standard cross-section as well. There's a couple of items. Again, those are at the end of the set. I can go to those if people have questions about them. Minimum of, this is also mentioned again, in addition to in the cross-sections, the 12-foot wide travel lanes. The minimum pitch on all storm or surface water drains is a half a percent. There are storm drains that we included at 0.4%. We've provided calculations documenting that 0.4% is adequate to carry the flow. The fire alarm boxes is a part of the rules and regs. We don't, this is not part of what we were asked to include as part of this design. We are not including that as part of this design at this point. And for that reason, seeking a waiver. And again, the last one is a reiteration of that 15-foot Boston City Base requirement that we're seeking relief from. So if I jump to the cross-sections, we are showing, you know, our widths of various, I'm going to zoom out. I believe most have copies of this. But they may have had a chance to review the the plan, the key plan on the upper right shows where these cross-sections are taken at various points throughout the site. And we're providing those details of each one of those various cross-sections and the deviations thereof from the subdivision cross-sections. So if you have specific questions, I can get into the details on each of these cross-sections. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mike to close it out.
Thanks, Jeff. So as I, you know, this is a part of a long process for us. But, you know, I think, I know for some folks that are new to the planning board, there may be general questions about the project. We're obviously also very happy to answer any questions about, you know, the specifics of the plans, the waters, or the utilities, cross-sections, et cetera. And I would also say that, you know, we have met extensively with the City of Revere staff, with Frank Stringi, the city engineer, fire department, DPW. So I've reviewed those plans and gone through these in detail. So I don't know, Frank, Frank Stringi, if you have any other, anything else to say before it's opened up to questions?
Yeah, I would just like to say the waivers requested were put forth in the preliminary plan that was approved by the planning board back in May. And all these waivers have been acceptable to myself, the fire department, DPW, and the city engineer. So they're all acceptable waivers and necessary in the terms of this, of this project. I would also state that the city engineer, myself, DPW, superintendent, and deputy fire chief have reviewed the infrastructure plan extensively. We've had numerous meetings with HYM. They incorporated our comments and our recommendations in this definitive plan. So the plan reflects our recommendations for sewer, water, and drainage design. And that's, that's it.
That it, Frank? So how I intend on proceeding is we're going to, I'm going to go through, since we're doing this all virtually, is I'm going to, I'm going to go through each of the board members and ask them if they have any questions. And we're going to start with the three new board members since they weren't here in May. When you put the preliminary project before us, they might be less familiar with it. So for questions, let's start with Ms. Penn since she seems to be anxious with some questions. Kathy, why don't you, if you have any questions, please ask Mike or Jeff.
Okay, well, he answered pretty much most of what I would have asked. Concern about the drainage mostly would be one concern, but seems like they've done a lot of work on that. And I, any height restrictions on your buildings?
Sure, so we do have, we do have zoning heights which were approved. So some, there'll be some, you know, shorter buildings, if you will, that are, you know, seven to eight stories in our initial phase. And there'll also be some taller buildings up to about 170 feet in this initial phase. But I would say that the building, and also I'd say the building that's closest to the T station is a three-story building that's a planned to be a boutique office building with ground floor retail and restaurants.
So 170 feet, which would be 17 floors?
Yes, well, about 15 floors.
Okay.
Yes.
Would that be an apartment building?
Yeah, that'd be a residential apartment building with ground floor retail and restaurants underneath. I mean, not at the ground floor, I should say, not underneath.
Okay, and I'll just ask if it's plausible to try to bring in some high-end retailers and restaurants? Things that will draw people in.
We, well, our goal is to draw people to our site. You know, we want people to visit from, well, I guess two things, just for background. I mean, we want to, one, be seamless, you know, be connected to the community. You know, so we would like to bring in a lot of local, a lot of regional retail, including, of course, restaurants, or it could be a, you know, a wine bar or a brewery or anything like that, cafes, coffee shops. We are also setting aside 10% of our retail to work with local establishments in Revere and of course, in East Boston. When we start developing East Boston, we'll work with local East Boston retailers. So that, you know, we want to make sure that we are, you know, part of the community and have a seamless connection to what's going on in the current, you know, in Beauchamp Square as it exists today. But, you know, our goal is to bring in very exciting new retailers, restaurants, because we want people to visit the site. We want people to live here, we want people to work here.
I would add, Mike, I would add to that, Mike, that under the special permit process and master plan, there's a requirement that at least 50% cite the commercial use.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I'm all set. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Penn.
Thank you, Kathy.
The next, the next board member is Mr. O'Brien. Do you have any questions? Mr. O'Brien?
He's unmute.
You have to, you have to push star six to get off, to be unmuted. There you go.
Okay, I think any questions that I would normally have have already been answered. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien. Next is Mr. Jamelo. Do you, do you have any questions, Juan?
Yeah, so I appreciate the work you guys put into this. I, it's clear to me that you have been working with our city partners, our city officials and city government to ensure that this this development fits the community, fits the fabric of the community. I have some questions that must have been, I imagine, covered during the planning phase and the initial presentations of the project. I'll start with, my first kind of basic question is, are any of these roads main roads to the rest of the project? Or are they planned out to be main roads to the rest of the project?
So I can, we can both kind of tag team that. So I would say, I don't know if Jeff, you want to minimize my... So I think the Road B, as Jeff has talked about, that is, so that will be a signalized intersection and that will be what's considered our Main Street. It will, it will be named something different than Main Street, but that will be a primary entrance point to the site. Tommascello will also, of course, still remain. And we're, we're going to be constructing a temporary road that, that leads from Tommascello into the project. So Tommascello is, in some ways, the backbone of the entire interior roadway system. That will remain, it will, work will be done to Tommascello over time and will be connecting to Tommascello in this initial phase through a temporary road. So I think really, Tommascello, you know, again, via 1A or via Revere Beach Parkway and also that Road B are the main entry points from a vehicular standpoint into the site.
Right, thank you. And I asked that question.
Thanks, Jeff.
I asked that question with the thought that, obviously, we have a great resource here with two train stations, right? And I hear that there's on-street parking. And there's always a concern, obviously, about parking in our community. And so in the main roads, is there room for, or has there been planning around how we encourage public transportation access to the site? Obviously, Beauchamp and Suffolk Downs stations being two prime rapid transit options. But in the future, I know this is a 30-year question. Forgive me if I'm, if I'm, I'm asking you to kind of see the future here. But, but, you know, well, the main roads, would there, have there been any planning around the possibility of expanded, expanding into bus lanes and all these other things that will make the project more accessible and attract, you know, a wide range of clientele? And also, quite honestly, make it easy for the working people that are going to be living there?
Good questions. So yeah, so, so some of these items, of course, have been, well, they've been talked about for, for many months with, you know, with the state, with Revere, with Boston. But I'm happy to kind of give you a snapshot if it's helpful. So clearly, you know, Juan, just from a phasing standpoint, you know, when I had the phasing plan up before, we showed that we're, you know, we are starting the development at the T stations with the idea that we really want the T stations to be the front door of the site. So as Jeff has up, we're purposely starting next to the T station with Phase 1R. And then when we go to the Boston side of the site, we're purposely starting the development near the T station. So we're trying to, whereas right now, the, the site is really fronted on 1A on the Boston side and Winterbav Avenue, Revere Beach Parkway. On the Revere side, we want, we feel like the front of the site is really on the T and are clearly going to encourage public transportation. In addition, there's a couple of other things I would mention. One is, you know, as the site gets built out over time, we are going to have an onsite shuttle system. So that can bring people, so as you get to the, you know, the farther edge of the site, the edges of the site are in Phase 3B or 3R and 3B. As you get farther away from the T stations, it is a longer walk. So we're going to be providing an onsite shuttle that will help people, again, kind of be, if they're working in one of the buildings that's near Tommascello or farther away from T stations or live there, they can easily get to the T, you know, from there. So again, that would again encourage people not to drive to the site. They would want to take the T. If they get off at the Beauchamp Station, they'll get on the onsite shuttle. Because if they don't want to walk a half mile, you know, to their building where they work or live or anything like that, they can do that. Thirdly, I would say, we're also planning for some off-site shuttles that would be, that would connect to some of the other transportation hubs in Boston. So again, as the site gets built out over time and there's more workers here and more residents here, the idea is that we would have shuttles that, you know, as an alternative to the Blue Line, there'd be a shuttle that could then, could take someone from the site to North Station or to North Station or to South Station or to any other transportation hub or three or four other key transportation hubs in the area so that, again, all the traffic isn't fully reliant on, on the Blue Line. You know, as far as the MBTA, you know, there are, we have added, we did add a bus stop on Tommascello Drive. That was actually a request of a city council and we worked with the City of Revere on. That's the 119 bus. We added a bus stop on Tommascello near the shopping center. That was an improvement we made. I don't think, there are probably not the MBTA buses that run through the site. Again, that's, that could be years in the future. I don't anticipate that, however. You know, we're doing all we can with the onsite shuttles, also other connections to those key transportation nodes in the city. So hopefully that helps to answer your question, at least at a high level.
Thank you, Mike. Juan, we're going to move on, okay, Juan?
Yep, no, that was great. Thank you, Lou, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine, Lou's okay. The chair recognizes Mr. Devoe if you have any questions.
Yes, I do. You know, as always, and as right from the very beginning, my primary concern is the traffic impact in Beauchamp Square and Donnelley Square. I, you know, and I think every step of the way, I've pointed out the fact that, that whatever can be done in terms of the engineering and the strategy of traffic flow, the traffic flow needs to be designed so that it leads away from Donnelley Square rather than into it as much as possible. You keep talking about that access road being temporary. I, you know, and I see that, and I don't know how temporary temporary is, but once 1R comes online, is that road still going to be direct to Tommascello Drive? Is that still going to be in use and in effect?
Right, so this, this is the full, the plan that Jeff has up right now shows the full build-out of the site. So this doesn't, so this doesn't show that temporary road. But we, but there will be, there will be a road that allows residents to get to, you know, I think it cuts right across here, Jeff, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's right around, you know, Tommascello's like today, oh, sorry, right here, thank you. So there'll be a road that connects from here to, again, to this initial phase. Other, because otherwise, we have, we only have this one, we only have this one entry and access point, which again, will be signalized. But it's important to have, you know, connection back to Tommascello. So if someone wants, of course, go down to Route 1A, they, they can easily get there as opposed to coming on to Winterbav Avenue.
Well, and that's the thing is, is because, I mean, it's still going close to the Winterbav Parkway and Winterbav. And, and as we all know, I think people, if they have their druthers, given the way 1A currently is, is they're going to try and go through Donnelley Square down Bennington Street into Boston versus trying to come out this way to 1A. So the question then comes down to what we brought up before is, what's being done at 1A that's going to incentivize people from this project to go that way rather than through Donnelley Square? What sort of strategies and plans are being made to try and do that? Because, and then to that, and the reason why I bring this up is, I guess, and I haven't seen or heard, if I'm looking at the level of traffic in Donnelley Square today and saying that that's at zero, what percentage of increase from this project is going to occur in Donnelley Square, given the current plan? Because when I see a right-in and right-out, for example, right-out is bringing it right into Donnelley Square. When I look at the other lighting that allows them go to any direction, they're going to go in towards Donnelley Square instead of left down the parkway. You know, so I still have concerns that not enough is being done to draw traffic away from Donnelley Square rather than to it. And so that's my primary concern from what I see. One other question is a technical in a sense, when you were talking elevation... One other question is a, a technical, in a sense, when you were talking elevations coming off the project into Winterbav, are you basically saying that, because I know if you're standing on Winterbav, you're looking down into Suffolk Downs, uh, you are building that property up. I know that, uh, the, the levels up, are you saying that the levels are going to be higher than Winterbav, and so that therefore, it's kind of like a downward slope from the project into Winterbav, or is it going the other way upward slope? I was trying to understand what was being referred to relative to the elevations.
Sure, it's, uh, the site itself, I'm, I'm sorry, Mike, if you want to take it?
No, no, go ahead, that's fine.
Uh, so the site itself is actually, it's, it's being built up, uh, in a resiliency effort. Everything is coming up in, in grade, uh, to get it higher. Uh, and so in the future, you know, right now, today, when you're standing out there, like you said, on Winterbav, you're looking down at the site, in the future, you'll be looking from the site down to Winterbav. And so what we needed to do was maintain, obviously, we're maintaining the elevation of Winterbav Avenue, so we need to get back down to that existing grade in Winterbav.
It's going to be a downward slope to Winterbav coming off the property?
Correct.
Okay, and?
Yep. So, you know, well, Ed, I guess I would say, I understand, you know, I know we've talked, uh, we've had many conversations, you know, and we have done a, you know, we've done a thorough review with, uh, the state, with the, um, the design advisory group in Revere, um, as you know. Um, and, you know, you know, we are, we are, we are putting a lot of work into the Phase 1, uh, infrastructure, you know, kind of the Phase 1 traffic mitigation. There's a lot of work being done. As you're probably aware, where we're doing, we're doing work all and, all up and down the Winterbav Avenue corridor, where we, you know, we're also taking care of, doing a lot of work at, uh, uh, Donnelly Square, up to Harris Street, and then we're also making some improvements on 1A itself, too. So there's a lot of work we're doing, all of which, of course, costs a lot of money. Um, you know, I think, you know, we want, we want, we need to be able to have cars access the site, right? So we can't, we can only, we can't force them to only go one way out of the site. Um, we obviously want to make it easy for them to get to 1A, and if, and I, and my, my thought is that they would find that it's better to get to the city via 1A than trying to cut through Donnelly Square. I can't totally predict what those cars will do, but, um, you know, we're trying to make improvements to the, you know, clearly, the immediate surrounding area, making improvements on Donnelly Square, uh, making sure that all the signals, right, you know, making sure all the traffic signals are tied together, and that it works seamlessly. Uh, and I know that's a future conversation when we come back and, and, you know, talk to the, you know, Beachmont Improvement Committee, and also the larger community on the off-site improvements, but, um, you know, we're doing a lot of work in, in the adjacent neighborhoods, and, you know, I, I, I hope you can trust that we're, you know, this is still a good, this is a good project for the community, and, um, you know, there will be more residents here, there will be more people working here, um, so there will be more, there will be some more vehicles on the road, but all in all, it's a good thing for, uh, Revere in general.
Well, there will be, and, and I guess what I'm trying to get a sense is, and I've not seen figures in, in, in all the discussions we had today, to tell me exactly what is going to be the percentage of increase, given the current design and strategy. That's a concern. Those numbers need to be out there, but I also, as I said, um, and I know you're doing everything you can, but bottom line is, I'm still very concerned that, that there's not enough being done to draw traffic away from the square. And, and all the improvements that you're doing there are just being done to make traffic flow easier through there. Remember, it's a hugely pedestrian area as well. And I'm concerned, particularly with all of this traffic, is that we need to make traffic flow, who loses out? Pedestrians lose out. Who's going to lose out? The area's going to lose out in terms of being, um, uh, 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 quality. And I'm looking for a life, life quality area, if you will, because it's going to be more cars than people. So, I, that's a concern.
If I may, the chair, Ed, is that, can I move on now, sir?
Yes, you can. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Louis. Um, obviously, we'll have further conversations about it, but that's my primary concern, and I want to vote it noted as, as we send our comments.
Mr. Chair, this is Frank Stringi. I just want to reiterate what Ed said, and we addressed that when we approved the preliminary plan, and we'll include the same language in the definitive plan. And basically, what we're saying is that temporary access road had to be constructed prior to the construction of any other roadway within the Phase 1R subdivision. And this road's going to have to serve as the sole access and egress for all construction-related traffic to Route 1A via Tommocello Road. And the road will also serve as the primary access egress for all traffic within Phase 1R, until all the off-site improvements are completed in Winterbav Avenue and Beachmont Square. And further, the planning board went on to recommend, as, as Ed recommended, that HYM, to the best of their ability, work with MASTOT to accelerate the Route 1A improvements prior to the completion of Phase 1R. So that language will be duplicated, duplicated in the definitive subdivision plan approval of the planning board, as Ed originally requested.
Okay, thank you. We're, we're going to move on. Mr. Amico, do you have any questions?
No, Louis, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mr. Delvecchio? Do you have any questions, uh, Mr. Delvecchio? Are you unmuted? Mr. Delvec?
No.
Well, thank you very much. And, and finally, um, well, Mr. Disimone, and then the chair. Mr. Disimone, do you have any questions? John, could you unmute yourself? Do you have any questions? Mr. Disimone, one last call. Okay, we're going to move on.
I have no questions.
Thank you very much, John. The chair is, uh, all the questions that the chair would have were answered previously by the other, uh, members of the board, so we can move on, Frank, to the next, uh, to the next proponents. Do you have any more proponents? Uh, do you want the, do you want the officers of the, of, of the city? You know, the fire, fire and DPW and engineering, are they going to speak to us today?
Well, they are present if they wish to speak. I, I, I know they already, already had commented on the plan, and their, their comments have been incorporated in the, and what's reflected, presented to you today.
Does any?
Mr. O'Brien has his hand raised as a proponent?
No. Which O'Brien? Mr. O'Brien, the?
Robert, Robert O'Brien.
Yes, he's, he's, he's a board member.
No, Robert O'Brien, not James.
James O'Brien is a proponent.
Okay. A lot of O'Briens, they all say Mister, they don't have first names. Mr. O'Brien, would you like to speak on the issue? Does he have his hand raised? Let him, would you like?
Yes, he does. He's also present.
Would you like to speak, please? He has the floor.
I believe he's on mute. He's trying to speak.
You can't hear you, Bob. Get unmute yourself. Star six on your phone.
He's unmuted, but for whatever reason, there's no volume.
I'm going to text him and just let him know that he's not here.
Yeah, thank you, Julie. Assuming he hears us.
Okay, hold on. Give me one second.
Frank, while we're waiting for him, when is, when is the lights on 1A going to be done? Is that part of what you were just speaking of, of trying to, uh, you know, accelerate that?
The, the light, the signals on 1A?
Yes, coming off of Tom, Tom Salloway. When's that signal getting done? So you can go into Boston?
So that, so that, I think, is at, uh, approximately 2.5 or 3 million square feet. I can get to the, I, let me just, I'll confirm that for you, but it, it is, uh, it is post, it is currently per approvals post, post, um, Phase 1R, uh, as approved by, uh, MEPA.
Julie, do we have Bob, Bob O'Brien yet?
Yeah, um, yeah, so I'm actually on the phone with him now. He's unmuted, and for some reason, he's not able, he's talking, you cannot hear him. So is there, is he not unmuted on your end, Louis?
It's got nothing to do with me, right?
Okay.
It's got to do, I don't know.
It's the volume, it's the vol, it's, it's going to be a problem with Bob's, uh, computer. He's unmuted on our end.
Yeah, you should check his volume, see if you can turn it up.
His microphone volume may be too low.
He might be muted on his computer, and, and, rather than the Zoom meeting. Could be muted on his computer, uh, speaker, too.
All right, Louis.
Why don't we move?
Why don't you come back to Bob later?
Hi, Bob is, um, Bob just said that he is in support, um, on record that he is in support of the planning board's approval of this. And he's going to try to call in and see if he can pick the volume, but for now, that is a statement of approval for this, so he, he approves it.
Well, yeah, thank you very much, Julie.
You're welcome.
If we, if we can move on, Frank, you, you said that, uh, that the, that the department, the department heads are here. If they want to weigh in, they can, but we have their approval, right?
Uh, yes, you do, and, and, and they will, uh, they will have to sign, endorse the plan prior to the planning board endorsing the plan. The planning board.
Go ahead, Frank.
Go ahead. They, they, if they wish to speak, they're, they're welcome to.
Hi, uh, Mr. Chaloni, this is Paul Argenzio.
Yes, Mr. Argenzio.
I, uh, we've, I've looked over this plan several times. We've had a million meetings on this. I'm quite impressed with the layout, and I'm fully satisfied from a public works, uh, point of view, uh, that this is an excellent project. Uh, I am more concerned about the surface roads and what have you. Frank Stringi and Nick Reistrum have worked, uh, extensively on the infrastructure, so if they want to speak about that, uh, but I'm full supporter of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Argenzio. Any other department heads from the city of Revere that wish to speak?
Uh, I'll speak on behalf of the Fire Department. This is Deputy Chief Paul Cheever. Uh, as Paul Argenzio said, we've had multiple meetings. Um, I've got, had other meetings on the side with some of these buildings already, in terms of, uh, uh, safety systems that are going to be in them and everything else. I'm, I'm very happy with how this development's going. I think it's going to be a, a great improvement in this area and a plus for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Cheever. Is there, uh, any other department heads which would like to speak?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I spoke to, uh, City Engineer Nick Reistrum early, earlier today, and he's in favor of all the infrastructure he's approved on the site, including the drainage, water, and sewer. And, uh, he says he had no problem from me conveying that to the planning board, that he has approved his review process.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Thank you, Frank. Are there any more proponents? Hearing none and seeing none, I'll close this side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Julie, do you see anybody's hands raised?
I see nobody's hand raised. Um, I'm looking, and there, nobody's hand raised on the attending side, so.
Seeing none and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Uh, I guess we've already had our question and answer period. Is there any more questions? Any other board members wish to ask a question of any of the participants? Hearing none and seeing none, I guess we can move on, Frank, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Move on to the regular meeting.
We'll move on to the, thank you.
Thank you, uh, thanks for the planning board, and, uh, to the chairman, and thanks, Frank, and to all the planning board members. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. So we're going to move on to the regular order of business. We need a motion to approve the previous mi, the minutes for the previous meeting. Do I have, do I have a motion?
I make a motion with?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Disimone made the motion to approve. Who's, who made the second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Mr. O'Brien seconded the motion. To, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
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 Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. I guess we're going to vote on public hearing we just heard, right, Frank?
Correct, public hearing.
Okay, that's going to be a roll call vote. So, uh, is there any further discussion on, uh, what we just heard at the subdivision? Frank, can you, could you read the, uh, exact motion that we're going to be approving or disapproving?
Yes, the, uh, this will be approval of the definitive subdivision plan for Suffolk Downs, with conditions, and, uh, the conditions would be, uh, approval of the requested waivers. And I can highlight those in the, in the, in the approval letter that were addressed, presented to the board by Jeff Heidenberg. Uh, the planning board already approved those waivers in the, in the supplementary plan. The waivers have been approved by the various department heads. The other condition would be that, uh, the planning board would not endorse the plan until it's been endorsed by the Fire Department and City Engineer and DPW Superintendent. So after the vote of approval, uh, the plan would be endorsed by, uh, those three department heads. And then I would call the majority of the planning board to come up to the office, or, or we can meet somewhere else to endorse, uh, endorse the plan.
We have to sign, we would have to sign off from the majority.
Yeah, and then it gets recorded and registered deeds.
Okay, so.
The other language I would add in is the language that was in the preliminary plan that, that was recommended by a member at DeVoe, which I, I highlighted regarding the, the, uh, temporary access road, that that be constructed prior to construction of any other roadways within the subdivision. Let's see, what else we have here? All the fire hydrants have been approved by the Fire Department already, so that condition is, yeah. I would, and they provided stone bounds, uh, within the plan. And traffic impact analysis has been completed for roadway A and B on, at Winterbav Avenue. That has been part of the submission documents to the planning board.
Frank, if I could interrupt you. So what's the motion?
So, so basically, the motion would be approval of the subdivision plan, uh, subject to the, to the, uh, final approval from the, by the Superintendent Public Works, Fire Chief, and City Engineer. And, um, that would basically, in, in including the waivers, in approval of the waivers.
Okay. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion with that, to make, to make a motion of, uh, what Frank just described. I need a motion from the floor.
So moved.
I'll make.
Ms. Penn made the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. O'Brien. Motion by Ms. Penn, second by Mr. O'Brien. All those, well, we want, we want a roll call on this, uh, Frank, if you could call and roll.
This is a motion of, uh, approval of definitive subdivision plan with conditions, and I'll highlight the conditions in the approval letter regarding the, uh, construction, construction of the temporary access road, the approval from the Superintendent Public Works, Fire Chief, and City Engineer, and, and as well as the, include the, uh, approval of the waivers. So on the motion by Mrs. Penn, seconded by Mr. O'Brien, uh, Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Delvecchio?
Yes.
Mr. Disimone?
Yes.
Mr. DeVoe?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni's absent. Uh, Mr. Jamello?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Penn?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Voted and so ordered.
That's my line. Voted and so ordered. Thank you, thank you, uh, Frank.
Thank you all, and, uh, congratulations to Kathy Penn on joining the planning board.
Thank you.
The chair will now, the chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Any objection? Second by Mr. O'Brien. Any objection? Hearing none. Have a nice evening, everybody.
Before you go off, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, just regarding other business coming before the board.
Go ahead, Frank.
It's going to be a busy month in, uh, It's going to be a busy month in, uh, February. Uh, the city is working on a, uh, riverfront master plan for the Point of Pines area and code, including, uh, the Fairytale Boatyard Site, Gibson Park and the G&amp;J Site. So, what will come out of that is an overlay zoning district for the G&amp;J Site, uh, just before the GE Bridge. Um, so that'll be presented before the planning board. Um, also, I think we have other zoning amendments that'll be coming up before the planning board in that month. So, to give you a heads up, should be a pretty busy night, month. Also, the, uh, the master plan will have to be approved by the planning board for that riverfront, uh, district, master planning district. And that will be coming before the planning board and city council very shortly.
Can I just ask who's, who has the project? Who's doing it?
Well, it's, uh, Redgate is, uh, has purchased the G&amp;J Site and they will be developing that site. But as part of that, part of that project, that's just part of the master plan development for the riverfront district. We include shoreline improvements, uh, including the city acquiring the boatyard, the Fairytale Boatyard for a community rowing program and making that parcel a part of Gibson Park and expanding our, our recreational base in that area.
Oh, nice. Okay.
Include boardwalks and walkways along that shoreline from Mills Avenue all the way around to GE Bridge, which has been underutilized and disrupted over the years. So, it's going to be a very nice, walkable.
That's very nice. Yeah.
Moving access to the, to the riverfront.
Nice.
Are we going to get a boat ramp there, too, Frank?
Yes, there'll be a, a boat ramp at the, uh, that will be just for non-motorized boats. It'll be for kayakers, rowing and canoes.
Do you want to continue this, maybe?
You gotta have a conversation about that.
Well, we, we looked at that also and that'll be explained when we present the master plan. Uh, there's, the depth of that area makes it very difficult to put a boat launch there. Um, and we don't want to get into any dredging because it's, it's heavily polluted, those sediments in the river.
Revere needs a boat launch somewhere.
I think, I think the one important thing to note is that if the boathouse does get turned over to a community voting, uh, we're going to have a lot of programs that will allow people to kayak, canoe, row, uh, on the riverside and into the, into, um, towards Revere Beach. So, this is, this is a very exciting proposition, uh, for the city. So, I know that everybody would like to have a motorized boat launch there, but unfortunately, like Frank said, it's, it's better to have a non-motorized boat launch, especially that side of the, the river.
No, I understand why you may not be able to do it. I'm just saying, we need one somewhere. We don't have one.
This can all be up, come up for discussion when we discuss the projects, right? It's all be, okay.
We're all in agreement with that, Ed.
So, the motion to adjourn is carried. Is that, Frank, is there anything else you'd like to add?
That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Frank. Thanks again for doing such a great job. We really do appreciate all the work you've put into this and, and Julie and the rest of the crew. So...
When is the next meeting?
Wait, they'll, they'll let you know.
Oh, well, I'll be sending out a notice probably, uh, in February sometime.
They'll let you know. Thank you, everybody. And thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you for your support. Thank you for your support for the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
That's right. Congratulations.
No, no, thank you.